All right, well, Fact TV is here and it is time to, we'll call this meeting the Westminster School Board to order at 6:03 PM on Thursday, January 19th at the Westminster Center School. Welcome to everyone. We'll start with just a going around the room introductions, which we typically do now, especially with this Fact TV. It's nice for the public to know who's here. So Karen, let's start with you.
Karen Blanchard, Westminster Board.
Great, thank you very much. And let's go around with you, Jim Vazina, if you would introduce yourself.
Jim Vazina, Finance for the ESU.
Liz Hardy, Principal Westminster Center School, Team BLC Westminster Board.
Andy Haas, Superintendent Schools.
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster Board.
Margie Ferry, Westminster Board.
And David Major here as a town member and I'm the Town Leader.
All right, Charlie, you could quickly introduce yourself too.
I am Charlie Hutchinson, Vice President of the Board.
Thank you. And I would just add quickly that it's Rachel and Olivia and David Major as a participant, a community member, joining the meeting tonight. Welcome Danny and the couple who also participate with us. David, as he just said, is a citizen in Westminster and the Town Moderator for the Town of Westminster, but also a former school board member, former Chair, and we're always appreciative to see you. So thank you very much. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Okay, I think there are none. Let me see if there are any communications and public comments. David, you may, I would invite you as Chair to participate along the way in our conversation about budget and as it relates to town meeting and that kind of thing. I don't know whether you want to make any comments now or just wait for the context to have that rise. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for being here. And I have another hope tonight that with the weather, all things considered, not that it's that dramatic yet, but with school having been closed for tomorrow, I think we should, I think we can make this a pretty efficient meeting, but at the same time, to make sure we raise any issues that anybody has and again, any detail that everyone wants to address. Let me go next to reviewing and approving the minutes from January 5th. Can I have a motion? All right, any discussion? Hey, all those in favor, I'll start with Karen because with you remote, we need to have you vote that way.
Aye.
And in the room, the rest of you, orally? All those in favor?
Oh, you called me orally.
Aye.
Everyone. All right, let's do it that way. All right, therefore it's unanimous. That's funny.
It's a light theme, right?
Exactly. Would you like to give a report? We'd love to hear.
Absolutely. For the past 30 days, our average daily attendance has been 91.9%. We have definitely been battling various illnesses throughout the year, but we're on the upswing right now, aside from the stomach bug. This past Monday was a professional development day, or this past two days, you do with a professional development day for staff. Elementary teachers did finish their fourth day of responsive classroom training. So last year, we took the first level of responsive classroom throughout the year, and this year, we took the second level of responsive classroom. And this is a student-centered, social-emotional learning approach to teaching and learning, and it consists really of a small set of research-based, evidence-based practices designed to create safe learning environments and create community within the classrooms and school. This past Monday, January 9th, was our first day of winter sports. Students in kindergarten, first grade went to Vermont Academy to ice skate. Students in grades two through six had a choice of skiing, snowboarding, kiddo pino, and swimming at Edgar May or outdoor adventure here at WCS. We did offer cross-country skiing, but we just learned today that Racton Ponds is not staffed on Mondays until we combining cross-country skiing with winter adventure here. So if we get snow, we'll be able to cross-country ski right here, hopefully ice skate eventually right here. But if not, I know this past January 9th, our first day was really awesome. It was so positive. Kids were learning to swim for the first time. We're learning to ski and snowboard and, you know, some of our youngest students, snowboarding for the first time. You know, and that is just like down and up for hours. They were so resilient and kept at it, which was really awesome to see. So we're excited for a great season. Next Thursday, the 26th, at 6:30 will be our winter concert, so another great tradition we're bringing back. Band students will report to our music teacher, Miss S, at 6 o'clock to drop off their instruments and get settled in that way. All other students are welcome into the school at 6:15 to report to their classrooms, and our concert will begin at 6:30. Again, we're thrilled to welcome back this tradition. And this year, we are working with the All Learners Network, which we have worked with in the past year. So throughout this year, our teachers in grade five and six have been working with an academic coach, Erin Oliver, from All Learners Network. And she comes monthly to meet with teachers, models, lessons, plans, discusses various problems of practice. So about three years ago, we started implementing the MAP menu within our MAP workshop. And this coaching really just enables staff to continue the implementation of the MAP workshop and reaching needs of all learners, which has really been magnified with COVID. So it's really been a great way to make sure we're reaching all the kids and their needs. My next talking conversation will be Friday, January 27th, from 8:00 to 8:30. So community members, school, community, and community at large are welcome to join me at the gym entrance and discuss anything that may be on your mind. And then our next round of MAP testing will be February 1st and 2nd. This is the tri-annual growth assessment for students in grades K through six. We did not assess kindergarteners in the fall, so this will be their first round of MAP for kindergarten only. And then this data is just used to track student growth and help in the intervention decision-making process. Again, this is just one data point and not by any means a complete look at the chart. February 8th will be our next early release. So most of the staff will be participating in developing our instructional focus, which will include deciding on a small set of evidence-based practices that will be implemented across all the classrooms to address comprehension. While that is happening, our crisis team will be meeting with Sunny Erickson from the Vermont Emergency Management Division and local first responders to engage in a tabletop activity where we talk through a response to an emergency situation here in the building and evaluate our current emergency response plan. So we believe that this will be a really great opportunity to grow and learn as a crisis team, going to having that dialogue. Are there any questions?
It's really exciting. Thank you so much.
Another question, but I went with the little kids to the ice skating. It was so much fun watching them. They were as wide as they were tall. Just kept on getting out there.
Yeah.
And when we sent them all home, everyone was like, they were just in the garden. At the end of the day, they were toast. It was really great.
During, when, you know, school was not in session on Monday, and she was like, but that's my winter sports day. Upset.
Yeah, it's really great. They love them. You know, I've got a grandmother's feedback. I mean, certainly both my little's absolutely left it. One with downhill skiing and the other with ice skating.
I do appreciate you making available for the younger students because oftentimes schools don't start winter sports till around third grade and it's late. I mean, yeah, I heard a lot about skating.
And skating is really appropriate for our K1. It's a really quick drive right to Saxton River. And it's a small amount of time, so they're not there for five hours, you know, and so far away. It's really, really good.
Yeah, great. A specific question with the amazing Studio Y, with tomorrow not happening, given the close day, do we have a means to reschedule for the kids?
Yeah, we have that in a plan. So with Studio Y, for the grades that only go for one day, if there's a two-hour delay or no school, obviously, we reschedule. So Ms. Lucas' class was supposed to go tomorrow. They'll be rescheduled for February 3rd. If there's a grade that goes for multiple days, two or three.
That's harder, yeah.
We, if there's a two-hour delay, we still go because they have, you know, other days that they're going to be there, so it's not as impactful. But we try to be proactive and get another date on the calendar where they can go.
That's great. So if we're ready, we'll move on to old and unfinished business. All of it is financially related and all of it is in preparation for town meeting. So again, with the letter to have the town moderator for Westminster here with us tonight, I think, Jim, do you want to present any information or simply respond to questions? What's your question?
Maybe we can talk about some of the things that we changed over the past, you know, two weeks or so. And I just want to say, we, you know, I'm not sure how you want to do it, but the tuition, we kind of constrained the tuition in and looked at, you know, the various places that students are tuitioned out to. We now have, it's a million 220,000. And I don't know how much that's down, but it's down.
We can speak to that. I'll be happy to add for a second, I don't know, Liz, and I hadn't asked this before, whether it's possible for you to share the multi-year enrollment since it's updated, and that would be a question, and would even give her permission to do it. It's not essential, but I can quickly say that our projections in the, in the last budget that this board committee has looked at in detail, it was an overall $5.3 million budget. And, and we have known for a long time that we have difficulty estimating the tuition costs for the seventh and eighth graders. And there are a variety of factors involved in all of that. The numbers that the ESU was putting forward were based on higher numbers of expected seventh and eighth graders than is likely than we will have. So two things have taken shape in the last couple of weeks. One is to reduce that line in the proposed 2024 budget. The other is to propose use of some of these significant surplus monies to give us a reserve fund that would allow us to offset those vagaries or those, you know, unpredictabilities around seventh and eighth grade tuition. And so that's what we've done. And by working with Liz to get more, even more accurate numbers, it's not to say they weren't accurate, but just really to update them and figure out who's doing what and the ins and outs of changes in where students are. That combined with anticipating that, again, it's not always easy to figure this out and might have more people come in, just led to, one, a reduction in the proposed 2024 budget period, bringing it down to 5.1 million approximately. And then looking at a reserve fund that would give us some flexibility so that we wouldn't overspend the budget if more students appeared. And I alluded David Major again, that by the time when he and I were on this board together before the forced merger, with Hudson and Raptin, when David was Chair at this time, one of the things that was most concerning to us was an unexpected increase in the number of seventh and eighth graders that put us in a deficit position for our budget. Though I've been particularly alert to that ever since, I mean, and Jim Vazina's been really patient with me about that. But we really dived into all of that. And so anyway, that's the single biggest source of the reduction in the proposed budget. And then when this board, as a committee, looked at the uses of the more than a million dollars in surplus monies from fiscal year '21 and approximately 680 or whatever, 608, whatever it is, thousand from '22, we have discussed previously in this committee, this board, setting up a reserve fund for that. So I think that combination of reducing the tuitions and giving us a way to offset unexpected changes puts us in a good place. And that is really the biggest change from the last budget that we looked at, which was version four, and this is version five.
The other large money that Cheryl looked at as well was the contingency reserve that the board had, which was 46,405. And again, didn't appear that that was used in the previous year. And so that was something that we looked upon. We think we're on solid ground.
Is that in some, some, some other maybe repair issues were the two that helped us bring that down a bit? That's, that's true. And so, you know, I'm, I'm feeling confident. It's really close to what we had before, but the reason for the changes were what we just described.
Tuition is the big kahuna here by far. Okay, I just have a few questions. They may be simple to answer. Okay, what's the difference between lines 37 and 38? Why are the two lines?
37 is the seventh and eighth grade tuitions and 38 is the early it.
Is that right? Okay, so then just do it with 30. Phil, I think you just described it, but am I right to say that the new calculation is based on the number of kids going in, in, in union times 20,000, whatever the fee is, plus the number of kids going out of union times whatever the fees are.
Correct.
That's, so what we're looking at is the equivalent of about 16 more students. Roughly 20 grand a piece, 33,000, 230,000 increase. That's about 16 more students. Is that really what we're expecting, 16 more students last year?
No, and I'm not sure I followed your message.
If the increase is 330,000 and the average cost is 20 grand per kid, that's 16 kids.
No, 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 the increase in tuition is because we're being charged.
That much?
Oh, yeah.
I just actually did some.
It's probably gone up 1,000 or 2,000.
No, no, it's gone from our being billed for about 16,000 for each of those students now to 21,000 per student.
So that's 66 kids then times 5,000 is about 30,000. Is that right? Is that where, so that's where it's all coming from? So it's just the 66 kids? That you, but you mentioned before.
It's, we're budgeting for 60 next year as we look at it.
I think one of the things too is there was, the current eighth grade at the middle school is a single-strand class, and then both the current seventh grade and our current sixth grade are double-strand classes. So they're, they're.
What does that mean?
They're two classes. So they're bigger.
Just bigger.
I think you said there were six more kids going up, six years or seven or whatever it is.
So we had an increase this year. We had six seventh graders that we did not know about that joined. So we had originally said, oh, we have 27 seventh graders, but actually we have 33 seventh graders. So next year we'll have 33 eighth graders, and we're predicting 25 seventh graders opposed to, so it was 53 and we're expecting 58.
I see. So based on that, and that what you just explained, it sounds like there is nothing in here for unexpected kids. That's all going to come from the contingency fund.
Well, there's a room for about two unexpected, but we've been, we've learned from these six students. So we did reach out to, you know, the Puddy Grammar, do you have current sixth grade students from Westminster that we need to budget for? To Hilltop, to try to get, be a little bit more proactive than we've done in the past.
So we, that mean we know that there aren't, they're hanging in the wings then?
Right. Right, we know that there aren't any currently enrolled in these schools. That, that's what was happening, that we had students that had been enrolled there since kindergarten that we did not have on our database.
Okay, so that answers the question for me. I was wondering why do we have a contingency fund if we'd already built it into this? Because saying we can no longer build it primarily, all the unexpected are built into the contingency fund, not the main budget.
Correct.
We've built about two.
Two or three, right?
Yeah, we built two or three into the budget and then there's the.
But we, we budgeted, this new budget, plans on 60 students. Liz's numbers are 58, so we have built in 42, plus the contingency fund if the voters approve it. So it's pretty close, but it's much more accurate than it was in this very difficult last number of years. And another part of this, again, let me reinforce it, is that we went for a period of time when the middle school invoices for Westminster students were not coming in. We kept seeing that. We kept seeing that. We finally got the invoices. And, and the invoices were for lower than what is being invoiced now, significantly lower. That's the difference that I'm talking about between about 16 something and now 21,000. Significant.
This isn't a question, but an observation. I looked through that chart that you sent from State, the average tuition. We are one of the five most expensive unions in the state. What would that be?
Compared when you say union, well, Rockingham, Western District. So, so, but within this union, the five most, so, so we, the first people of the venture is very top of that.
I think Ractin, it was significant.
Yeah, so the union represents some of the most expensive schools in the world.
But the tuition that you're paying is Rockingham's announced tuition.
And so they calculated it, we calculated it, Ractin calculated it, is that? I'm just wondering for the future, why are we so expensive compared to, or Philly everyone's and so on? I don't know, Route Randolph or whatever.
Sometimes it has to do with your, your, your facilities costs and then your staffing costs. And then as your pupil, as your, as your enrollment declines, that's where the gap happens.
Okay, I mean, clearly it is those things, but then the question is why is it happening here and not everywhere else? So I'm just interested in the future, you know, what are we missing there?
Well, we need to keep thinking about those questions. Having said that, I do think for our purposes tonight, and please in this moment, I think we have a realistic budget. I think it is now, it's, we've gotten into even more detail in the last few weeks to figure out what we can. A Jim and then Margie, yeah.
Charlie, I read the say, boss wife, the Burlington School District tried in their budget, you know, approved a 10% increase for 104 million dollars of money. And Hartford is in the order of the 10% increase in their budget cost. And I'm not sure where they're at for what they expend, but some substantial increases. And I think I mentioned statewide initially, when they were doing data collection, the state was up 8% on the cost. Again, the, the, the big driver, 12.7% on your health. I mean, and it doesn't sound that big, but it multiplies pretty good.
Margie and then we'll come over to you, James, yeah.
So that number, the 21, I think it's 21892, 88 or something. That's, I just want to name that word. That's equalized, they equalize people number for our.
Township.
Yeah, okay. And so each township or each school has their own.
Equalized many.
And are we paying, just, I know this is from last time. Rockingham's is different. Are we paying that out?
We'll pay what they ask us to pay, and they just voted 21,000 Monday night, which is what we have budgeted.
What are we going to pay? Private schools.
You pay the state.
The state average.
Which is all work.
Interesting. This is what you asked last time. Okay, so we're paying, for public schools, we're paying what they ask. For private schools, we're paying.
The state average.
Which is 19,000.
And estimating about 19,000.
And I wanted to say also, thank you so much, you guys, for working so hard on this because I know it's.
We've been tenacious, all of us, yeah, and trying to really make sure, David, please.
I was just going to say that it's been this way for quite some time, that there's a different tuition paid than the middle school and versus, say, Hillsaw and the Bridge School. And, but those schools don't have to take our students.
Right.
They don't, if you, you know, they don't, they don't have to pay. So the middle school takes anyone who wants to go there. And, and so it's a, it's a different, it's quite a different arrangement than it is with, say, the grammar school.
Well, and like, the public school offers special ed, whereas the grammar school does not, so maybe we should pay more, you know?
I think it's also, I think it's the normal schools who have school choice too, because I talked to Vernit about it too, and it's the same thing. They pay the tuition rate at bands, but then pay the state rate anywhere else. One of the reasons also, I think, this, I assume we don't have as high, what are, what are the free and reduced lunch numbers? And do you know what they are in Westminster?
We're about 50%.
Right, so other places that have higher rates of that are going to get increased title one funding. And so because we don't have this increased title one funding, those positions and some of that money has to go into our budget and it's made better for it. Have you said it back there? So that could be one of the reasons why our people spending is more because we're not bringing state assistance on those positions, I assume, which are still needed. The other thing I had a question about was, so if we look at this 1 million, which I know is changing, like the cost of sending students to bands, not bands, sorry, I work in that district.
What you have is not, what do you mean it's changing?
Is it, okay, so it still is the 1.2 million?
1.2 million.
Okay, so if you took that cost out, essentially, we're not taking it out, I know, but if you did subtract it from what our budget is, and then you divided what was left by the number of students here, that's actually the cost of educating a student in Westminster, right? Because how many students go to Westminster? It would, so are we choosing? Because there has to be some difference to.
And the figure is for seventh, eighth grade tuition, it's not.
Seventh and eighth grade tuition, but if they're, I'm just wondering if, are we taking? How, are we taking that, the tuition for seventh and eighth grade and all the students that are going to seventh and eighth grade, plus all the students here, and then dividing it by that number?
What, what you normally have to do is you have to pull out any tuition that you're paying. So you have a cost for operating the school. And then you subtract that, that outside tuition number. And I divide not by equalized students, but, but by real live student FTEs.
All right, wait a minute. I'm not sure. I follow all of that, but let me see if David wants to add in.
Because equalized students, does that include like the deductions that you could take out of the budget, like the free?
Equalized students, which I, I, I disagree with going in that, that because it has like 1.18 for each high school student.
Right.
Well, I mean, I, I think some of those are bogus data numbers. And I, I just, I don't agree with them. I have to use them, obviously. The state sends them to me and I integrate them where I have to. But when you're looking at cost, life bodies of students, FTEs, is, is a much, much shorter number.
But it does, it would change a little bit what the state sees as our people cost, for people cost if we calculated it.
Higher number.
Right, okay, that's what I thought. So it would actually go down if we calculated it that way, but calculated it this way. But back to the line you're pointing to, the 1.2 million, that's what we have to be prepared.
Yes, I understand. Oh, okay, good. I understand that. I was just thinking that one of the reasons it might look higher to is because we're not thinking, we're not using equalized people calculation, seeing the real time people.
The figure though, for equalized pupils, that is the number you were just citing, the 21888 or whatever it is, is based on dividing that number by equalized pupils, by the formula given to us by the state, which is 221. something 34, 37, instead of 157 students.
Okay, got it.
That's how that works. I have never been so immersed in all of these numbers.
I was just going to say, if anyone can figure out head funding, then we got a job for you.
So I, I mean, I, I agree in general, it's really nice to have actual concrete students and, or real live students, I should say, and do your calculations. However, the, what, what matters in terms of state funding is that we pass a budget that has a equalized, you know, a tuition per.
we pass a budget that has a equalized, uh, you know, a, a tuition per equalized pupil figure. The state comes up with a state average or a figure that, and maybe they've already done this this year, I don't know.
It just came out.
No, it came out, and if we're, we're above that, then, um, and I'm forgetting now, it's been a while, I either by a certain amount or just playing above it. Then, uh, the, we're penalized. Right. Um, so it's a real, from that standpoint, it's a very crucial figure. And then it's also, of course, important from the town voters' standpoint, that we're very clear whether we're talking about real life students or equalized people.
Exactly, so, so the good news is, and Jim just got this, again, version three today.
Right.
Um, uh, and I don't think we've sent it to everybody yet, but it's this little sheet in color that ends up in the town meeting book. And, uh, the good news is that our twenty one thousand eight hundred eighty eight for, for equalized pupil is lower than the threshold. We are not over.
Right.
Uh, which.
Right, so you don't pay a luxury tax, is that why?
Right.
I, I think of it in. No, like, 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 I think of it as like, it's like, well, I think of it as like in baseball, so like, you have a spending cap. And then if you go over it, you gotta pay a, a fee, basically, but you still keep spending over it, so.
So I, uh, Jim, I really like, um, because this is, this is now pretty straightforward from the state, this is what we're working with. And again, the good news is we're not over the threshold, so we won't be penalized. But I'd love to have you at an upcoming meeting and before town meeting, talk with us about the, uh, about some of the other numbers in the worksheet from the state. Uh, in, including the real estate assessment piece, what's it called? The common, the common level assessment and how that's, number is reduced and that's raised our potential tax rate. But all things considered, this is actually looking pretty good.
Yes.
For Westminster.
Yes, it is.
And so if you could, not tonight, we don't need to, because this is kind of a fait accompli. Uh, but if you could talk it through so that we're more prepared as board members at the upcoming town meeting, that would be really helpful.
That, that sheet is really important, as it tells.
Cheryl, may I clarify one thing?
Of course.
So Margie, when, when you made the statement, um, and it's why I clarified it more for, for the community. If a student attended the Putney School. And you said they don't have special education, we as a, as a district and as a supervisory union are still the LEA or the local education. Agency, we still, if a student is identified with a disability, have to provide special education services, which is a cost to the district.
So we will pull the student out?
We, so there's many different ways you do it.
Okay.
So, like, the Compass School has a special educator there. So then we work with them and they bill us.
Okay, okay.
So, um, if there is a, but if there's a, a student who's attending, again, the grammar school, and a parent, um, suspected disability. They come to us and, and we have to evaluate them. And then if they're found eligible for services, um, we have to, we have to provide those services.
Okay.
So, it just wasn't like.
Yeah.
We're not off the hook because the school doesn't have special ed, we still are responsible to provide those services.
So is that why line thirty eight is there, that you said it's special ed over there? The second whole institution?
No, that, that's early ed.
Early.
So that's the universal pre-k.
Any other questions or comments about the proposed twenty four budget?
This might seem like a stupid question, but why is there no printing and copying or giving the budget? Does it go somewhere else?
Yeah, well, the copy, the copying.
All online.
No more. You, what is gonna happen to you?
Sorry, Jim, sorry.
And besides, he doesn't like it back to back.
Yeah, I guess.
So, uh, it's because it's all in moves, like, to the S U.
Okay.
Yeah, a- again, this is essentially what we've been looking at for some weeks, yeah. The differences are what we've described tonight and they're not entirely, but mostly around. Yeah, I can send it, I'm, I'm sorry, we just got it today. Essential, but, but it's good news.
We've turned twenty five.
Any, any, people reading, have you done any more? Um, I was just thinking. What, um, I didn't say this, but I think everybody knows and I'll say for the public also, that we, this, um, board, that we're serving when it comes to the budget board, as a committee of the whole for a long time, weeks now, and working on the budget, and the greatest areas of concern really have been, uh, around the seventh grade tuition and the confusion and the beauty around some of that. Um, and so we're feeling good about the accuracy of this point.
Yes, King, if there is no further discussion, this would be the time where we would make a motion to pass this budget. Can I do that?
You may.
I would like to make a motion to pass this budget as written.
I second it. All right, there's a motion on the floor, any discussion?
Man just offered that, I think it would be advantageous, the motion, um, also include the actual dollar amount.
Okay, I would like to make, uh, excuse me, I would like to make a motion to pass the Westminster School, uh, twenty twenty four proposed budget of five million one hundred forty nine thousand seven hundred thirty one.
I second that. All right, again, any further discussion? Okay, with that, Karen, your vote?
Thank you so much for all this work, number one, and yes to the budget.
Thank you, Karen. And end of room, Margie?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Uh, gee, yes, okay, and I say yes as well, so we've got that unanimously passed, thanks, everybody.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it, and I just, if I could just say, um, publicly, thank you to Jim. For all the hard work he's done and putting the budget together, um, digging us out of a hole and filling the hole at the same time, so thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is to review and approve the articles, which are all of those items that would be taken forward at town meeting. And voted on by the voting members of the public of Westminster, who are in attendance at the town meeting on Saturday, March fourth. At the, Felsfals Union High School in Westminster. We've all reviewed, uh, the articles previously, and we, um, consolidated them, which I, I thought was kind of delightful. Margie proposed that initially, and I thought it might be better for us to keep them more separate, just so that the voters could see more detail. Um, actually, in talking with David Major and thinking about it further, he did suggest that we do some consolidating. I sent that out to you so that you could have a chance to review it. There's no substantive change to what we discussed at the last previous, uh, at the last committee meeting, meeting on, um, January five. But I don't know whether there are any questions now, we can entertain a motion to approve, uh, the articles, if anyone's prepared to do that.
I don't move.
Okay, um, but Karen has, uh, moved that all of, all of the, I would say, proposed articles for consideration by the electorate at town meeting on March fourth, twenty twenty three. Um, be approved to carry forward.
I guess I had a couple of questions, sorry, I missed the, did I miss the opportunity to do that or we just voted?
But we can, we can do it in discussion, that's just fine.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the floor, and, um, any questions are open to be considered. And if we need to take it apart again, we can do it that way. So Jim, we did finally get the audited number.
From.
For the budget surplus.
We, we've not received, uh, something in writing from, from the auditor.
Okay.
And we did receive the S U, um, today, but again, we did it verbally over, over Zoom.
Okay.
And, uh, we looked at Westminster's piece of the S U surplus, and, and that will go back.
That's a separate question, Jim, what we're seeing, uh, the twenty two surplus figures, so we have an estimate in here, we did get in writing the six hundred eight thousand.
Yes.
The separate is the new figure of the S U surplus. So, but we do have an estimated number in here, we called it estimate.
Yes, I mean, the letter seems to me to outline, you know, the letter two. That is, that, uh, that is, was also included in this email, feels to me like it covers those kinds of questions and is very, um, what I would consider very authentic for the, um, the town meeting, but I know that's not where we are, but they feel like they're, they're, they go together, that's all I'm wanting to say. So, that's why I, I voted to pass these the way they were.
Thank you, and she's referring to the letter for my sister's award.
Yeah.
Try to explain all of that.
Right, I guess I was just looking for confirmation whether we had, this was a confirmed number or not. Uh, the other thing is, we are dipping into the twenty twenty.
Two, and that's the figure you're asking about right now, the one million something is definitely audited.
Right.
And the, and the one for twenty two, we have seen in writing, but it hasn't been officially audited, nor has it been approved by the, the towns.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and that's where the letter outlines that.
That's correct. That's, that's the. Charlie?
I have a procedural question, if David could answer this, so Article six, five, rather, uh, uh, asked the voters to approve the budget, which includes, assuming they've approved Article one or Article three and said, yes, take three hundred thousand more, then with Article five, if you've said yes to that, what if they then say no, it's gonna be over. And you haven't spent, and so does that, and say, no, we wanna take out five hundred thousand. What if they?
First, I think you might be with me along.
I'm gonna get one that came from.
Today?
I think so, uh, just this most recent email, Article.
No, that's not the most recent.
Okay, well, it's still sad.
It's a drought.
You've got the number, the total final budget before you voted on all the other articles, what if they mess around with the other articles?
Uh, let me back up for a second. Uh, we sequenced the, the, uh, accrual of the three hundred thousand before the vote on the budget, so that we could vote on the reduced number. If they turn down using three hundred thousand of the surplus monies, then we will have a new budget figure, which is the five point one million.
So we just, but let's suppose they increase it, let's suppose the amendment on the floor, just now we will five hundred thousand back, it passes, we can quickly just amend that other figure.
Yes.
On the fly.
Yes.
And, and all those rules that go into how that happens on the floor, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, people would have to do all that, and that's what would happen, but what, uh, I, I, there are, uh, on this, the, the latest. Um, there is, I say Article H, voters approve use of up to a hundred and forty thousand dollars of surplus funds from the twenty twenty one balance and hundred and five, maybe twenty two for outdoor writing rooms, so. If that is not, they've already approved the budget, the voters have already approved the budget and the article's set. If Article eight doesn't pass, then, then that would weave that money as a surplus until voters come back another year or another, or special town meeting or something, I don't. There's, there's nothing to be done, that money can't be, you've already passed the budget, so that money would be, would, would sit there for a while longer.
And we've got some limitations on, on when we spend it.
I thought that money would go back to the taxpayers.
If it's in a reserve fund, it stays in a reserve fund, right?
Well, it's a surplus.
We put it as Article seven and make Article seven, should we reverse the order?
Reverse it, and then, and then it would be.
We've got several that follow, one of the reasons we talked, oh, was that the only one?
That's the only one now, yeah.
Oh, well, that's interesting, we could, we could move them. Yeah, uh, Article eight, but one, one of the things, this doesn't change what we're discussing right now, but one of the things that we discussed was how many of these directly help reduce, um, what taxpayers pay in their tax bills. And then this Article eight has more to do with some of the things being covered by S R monies right now, that we thought that reserve funds could help to address.
So, my, my question, I didn't follow all that, but it sounds to me the principle should be that the actual budget vote should be after all the other votes that might affect the budget.
All right, we can, um.
And that might also include, uh, what you have here is Article nine, a very minor thing, but they need hundred dollars and four thousand dollars to the directors. Because if that, if that weren't to pass, then the budget would be that much less they spend.
Oh, you're right, you're right. So are we, uh, we, so there, there's a motion on the floor, we can defeat the current motion and offer a new, uh, motion to rearrange.
Or just, or someone makes an amendment to.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I have one last question. So, am I reading it right, that we took out the, um, article where we're giving the monies back to the taxpayer? We're giving them back in the form of the reduction, uh, of by three hundred thousand and. Uh, Article three, yeah, okay, okay, sorry, oh, wait, but it's. And then Article four, absence the budget next year, which is another.
Okay, I got it, I got it, okay, yes, sorry, I was reading that.
And then, as, as David and I were talking about the other day, even putting aside a reserve fund for tuition, it's helped to reduce.
Yeah.
Taxes for people as long as we stay within budget.
Yeah.
And, and one could argue that, um, a reserve fund for improvements, for enhancements, all those kinds of things are also a help to the taxpayer. But I'm intrigued by the idea of moving everything up above, uh, what's the current Article seven. If that makes sense to people.
Because then, because then if those other things don't pass, we'll have to then change Article seven on the fly during the meeting.
Yes.
And ask for a different, so.
Right.
I, I might offer that Karen made a motion just to, um, approve the article as written.
Yeah.
I, I mean, you could interpret that, that what order you all agree to put them in, doesn't have to be amended in that motion. To, I mean, if you all can agree that you wanna go, you know, that seven is now eight, whatever, I mean, that's just the order of it, I mean.
Yeah, it's not like.
That, that's clerical, it's more. If you're not changing any of the wording of each article, you're just changing the order. Um.
Phil, I, I, I think someone making an amendment to say Article seven, uh.
Said by, yeah.
Put after the other financial, or, or, or just put it.
Or just that Article seven be the last, or last we vote in.
Before Article two.
Yeah, right.
So if you feel like that needs to happen, just say that I said that.
You just make the motion just for the notes, I made the motion.
Yeah. I like the articles. Arrange them.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, but I think that the articles as written. That's what I, that's what I was, you know, moving. Um, so if David feels like we have to have an amendment to that, which I don't actually agree with necessarily, but hey. Just tell me what I have to amend, so it's amending so that the seven is the last article, is this correct?
Yeah, and, and, and you don't have to make the amendment, Charlie could make a motion to amend the.
I have a friendly amendment, we're willing to, we accept the articles as amended.
Well, you have to.
And then add whatever amendments could be. And then add whatever amendments could be.
Which, which is to move uh, the current Article seven uh, to be the new Article nine.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you, are you okay with that amendment, Karen?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yeah, also if I, um, because Nicole does exercise on the three, but um, the. Have we talked about the date and time of when this meeting is, no?
The date and time is, this is the device, but I don't know why you don't. Um, and um, so it's Saturday, March fourth, uh, I, I think it's looking like, although we. Don't know for certain, but by the rotation system that you described to me, it's likely that the school district. And the meeting will be the first item, the meeting's, it'll start at ten o'clock in the morning, right, so this is ten o'clock AM at Bellas Falls.
March fourth, ten AM at Bellas Falls.
Yeah. And schools are first? That would be great.
Okay, so that needs to be on the dra- on the articles as well as in the letter.
It, it is. Yeah.
I know it's in the letter, so this is my question about the articles. Help me out here, so the letter. Are the letters and the article going together? Or not?
Yes, they do, and they go, everything like that goes to the town tomorrow, including Liz's letter.
That's what I, yeah, so that's what I wanted to say is that. I know that on the letter, it indicates the date and, the date and time of the. If I remember correctly. Yeah.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor, um, which is to accept the articles as written and as amended. With the amendment meaning to move Article seven to be the new Article nine. So, that's a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor, let me go to Karen, because I, because she's remote, we have to do it this way, okay.
If I said nay now, you would not be happy camper, I say yay.
Good, alrighty, Charlie.
Hi.
Margie.
Hi.
Okay, team.
Hi.
Okay. Alright. Did I miss anyone? Alright, well, we've done that, and um, I, I'm prepared to send all these documents to the town tomorrow. Okay, and I'll make this change electronically and copy you and Nicole, for sure. Um. What I need to do though is get people's signatures tonight. On this document. Um, so with that, do we have a way to print something in this building or not, either? Yes, so with that, you think you can move it around over here? Yeah, I didn't bring my computer, if you can move. Print seven to make it the new nine. And you, I, I sent the most recent document, but the one you have.
Didn't, didn't have the top stuff on it, so let me just.
Do you want me to forward it to you?
Would you please just sort of.
Cheryl. My signature is on, is actually on the letter itself. But it isn't, that I sent to you, but it is not on the articles.
You know that, and only because we haven't voted yet, and so I didn't.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but I do have a list, no, no problem at all, and then I was, and I will insert it in the Word version that Andy sent me. Um, but I, I was going to get signatures tonight, turn it into a. PDF, I can edit a PDF, I can insert her signature and we're done. Tomorrow. So with that, back then to the agenda, I think the last thing under the new business is a little more about the tuition. And I think it actually came up earlier, um. And that is uh. The tuition rates, and, and Jim, you just said that Rockingham voted on Monday night to. Uh. Charge Westminster and the other districts, I guess it would be out of the script.
Yes.
Twenty-one thousand is the fee.
Correct.
And. We, um, what did you submit for Westminster to the state for our tuition?
That have not as yet, but will tomorrow. Uh, depending on what you want to set it at, the maximum. That you can set it at is twenty-five thousand. And again. Think of, I, I said this to the Rockingham Board as well, let's say you said, uh, we want to charge forty. And, and you really can't, but if you did, at the end of the year, when you true up and you have to true up. Any amount of monies. Over and above. Has to be returned to those who paid that tuition. So. Um, there's an automatic trueing up that the state forces uh, with the expenditures.
With elementary school tuitions, those state averages are lower than the middle school and the high school tuitions. Uh, and as an example, in the current year, it's elementary school is sixteen some thousand. And uh, secondary is seventeen, eighteen, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, what, what, and David, do you remember, I, I, what we did? We don't have any students, by the way, coming right now, where they would be paying, Rockingham or anything that would be paying us tuition. But I think we have to establish a rate.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I, I think we just established it on roughly our costs.
Yeah.
Does everybody do that, is that not what people do?
No, that is what.
Do we have to make a motion? Right, you should. I mean, and I still have this question uh, about in reading the state law, I'm, I'm still not clear about. Any potential um. Reductions in the tuition based on transportation and other costs, I didn't understand that part of the law. If, if you're going with raw numbers, which is all costs divided by real number of students.
Right.
And that's where you're getting the twenty-one thousand.
Twenty, twenty-five thousand.
For Westminster?
For Westminster, yeah. And that's, the twenty-one is, is what's Rockingham is, and I said, for Rockingham. Both their fifth, sixth. And seventh and eighth. Come out to the same of twenty-one thousand.
In this letter, in our motion, you say equalize education spending at twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eleven.
Because equalized is different than real student.
Yeah.
Yeah, so equalized gets to be less than.
Yeah, because you take out certain, I learned about this. Yeah.
I'm sorry, just for the discussion sake, the governor is, is slated to sign um. To take that. Language out on January twenty-third, so you're unfortunately going to miss that, so you have. That, that language is actually now going to come out of having to be post, the equalized pupil. So you'll just have your budget in there from the future, but.
So, uh. There will be no equalized pupil?
No, no, there, you, so it was about seven years ago when the legislature. Um, mandated that you had to put that language in about the equalized pupil. Piece in the, in the morning. And um, some towns have, it's going to, it's already been passed, it's going to come out in twenty twenty-five. But some towns have pushed and they've signed, it went through House, uh, it went through the House, it went through the Senate, and it's, it's on the. Supposed to go on the governor's desk and be signed on the twenty-third to take that out for this year.
What practical difference does it make for the two and a half?
That's horrible. I don't think anybody understands what it is.
That's, that's why, and I guess some towns are, actually people are voting it down because they're looking at it and, and they're just voting it down.
It's horribly confusing because equalized.
Yeah.
There's, there's, of course, a great many pupils who are. Stand, are, are counted as more than one person. And. If you, if you don't acknowledge that in words, then, 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 your point becomes totally moot. There's no such thing as a flash.
You're saying two hundred and twenty-one equalized students in Westminster here, but there's not two hundred and twenty-one students here. That's right, no, there's a hundred fifty-seven, that's correct, so that makes our, to equalize budget student. For classes lower than our average.
Yeah, correct.
Because there's.
We.
Yeah, right. So, although that equalized pupil count doesn't include seventh, sixth graders, right? Yeah, it's not just the case, it's not just.
Yeah.
Yeah, but still, the point is.
I was picking up on the teams earlier, so when you're trying to calculate, what's it cost to educate a student in Westminster? This budget, except for the alternative edu- alternative uh, tuitions, it's all about elementary kids.
Right.
So wouldn't you take?
Except for the seventh and eighth grade.
Exactly, so if you took those out, that's, you'd say, that's what it costs us to educate the hundred fifty-seven school kids in this building.
That's what I want.
Wouldn't you then divide the budget by that? Without the, without the tuition. Real cost of educating kids here in Westminster.
Which when you do do that, I did that, that's what I was trying to say before, but I didn't say it as well as you did, Charlie. I did that, and it's like a little under eighteen thousand.
That makes sense, but, 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 yes.
So, so I took the cost. And pulled out. Any tuitions you paid.
Yeah.
For outside, wherever they went.
Well, no, because they're not for relevant.
No, I didn't do it, that was wrong. Yeah.
Their middle school cost, so the cost of educating elementary kids is, is without those numbers, divided by the number of elementary kids.
I was wrong, Charlie, I'm sorry, it was twenty-three thousand when I put it, it's twenty-three thousand three hundred four. With the air cost.
If you take out the, the one point two two.
I think so, I read it again, and then I'm not doing it.
And divide by a hundred.
Thirty-seven.
Plus the six that you're, you've been coming next year.
I, I think we could take an approach like that, it's not like this is being used often.
Right.
And, and we have some logic behind it, it makes sense to remove those, thank you, and so what, what's our figure?
And it shouldn't be a hundred fifty-seven, it should be a hundred sixty-three, because we're adding sixteen students next year.
But those sixteen students.
No, those are.
Oh, I think, I thought we were increasing.
It's actually twenty-five thousand, uh, twenty-five thousand thirty. That was what Jim said.
Yeah.
But we got it, Jim, we got there.
But you, but you can change it to whatever your comfort level is, you know. It's, yeah, for me, it, it's a, it's a non-issue, because. Higher or lower. At the end, there's a true up. And, and let's say you want to charge sixteen. Let's, let's say that, yeah, then kids come in, we charge them sixteen thousand, our cost was twenty-five, you know what we do? We bill them for the addition. And we have that authority to do. So, it's one of those things where you can't lose, but you can gain.
Okay.
Well, I, I think that the psychological piece here is. Let's see, going high. And giving people back money as opposed to going low and charging them. Does that make sense to you all?
I think we should just.
What's the high limit again? It is. So, team, you think we should be twenty-five?
I think we should.
Versus the twenty-one, twenty-two-ish.
Yeah, well, we are twenty-five. Even without the seven. Pardon me? The time is we are without the seventh and eighth graders, if there's one hundred fifty-seven students next year.
Well, so, I, I'm just. Which is that, if the audience is the town meeting, that they want to know the average cost of all the students from, from the district. If the audience is people coming into this building, then they, the one, we need to say, what does it cost to educate a kid in this building? There's two different audiences, and with the town meeting, we should divide by the whole population and keep the. The middle school tuition in there, because that's the realistic. When a voter thinks, well, how much does it cost us to educate all of it, well, it is twenty-one thousand change. But if somebody's bringing in, then our additional costs are marginally twenty-five thousand. So I'd say speed it along for the town meeting.
Oh, of course you leave the line for the town meeting.
Oh, I didn't know, of course, I thought you were suggesting.
No, no, we're only trying to figure out if, if um, a student. Who did not live in Westminster wanted to come to this school. What would the town where they live, New Westminster, to educate that child, that's, that's what we're trying to figure out right now. And so. Is it really twenty-five? Thirty dollars.
Another June.
And I think one way.
I just need it, I just want to say to you that from here. Everybody's speaking at one time, I can't. I don't get it, so I'm, if people could do it one time and around, that would be fantastic.
Apologies, sorry Karen, thank you. Can, can we get her back on the screen?
Oh, you set the top screen, I'm sorry.
So this was a discussion again about if a. Family wanted a student to come to the Westminster um, elementary school, some, center elementary school. What would the school charge for that student to come to the town outside of Westminster? That's the, that's the question on the floor. And Jim has provided figures that show all of the real costs in total. Divided by one fifty-seven, which is the current number of students. And, and is, does that figure again, just for clarification, include the seventh and eighth grade tuition, you're saying?
No.
One point two million or not?
All, all tuitions have to be pulled out of the calculation.
Right, well, that makes sense, and so, uh, but it, it, that's going to be significantly higher than the state average. You're saying, um, let's talk about it, but that would be far higher than we've ever, as precedent, set in Westminster.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I would um. Note that the um. That I think a little bit more, a little bit more analysis in that figure, and noting that, for instance. Some of the bus transportation is taking. Kids to. Uh, I mean, some of our, some of the transportation expenses in this. Are taking kids to the middle school. Um, and there may be a few other minor expenses that, that are associated with. The middle school population, that aren't just in that tuition. I'm not positive, am I right? I, I think the transportation is picked up as an assessment. And so. And that is cessable.
Is factored in to what?
Yes, yes, it is. Yeah. It is factored in, right.
Um, I could just, we'd like to amend your number, team, because you also have to take out line thirty-eight. Nine seven thousand. But when you do that, it comes down to twenty-four thousand four hundred and six.
Well, that's, that's early add.
Which is not on a hundred fifty second, would it?
No, no, it's not, you're right, that's right.
So unless you add those numbers, unless you add the other, add numbers in. Uh, then you have to take out the, the, the.
It's, 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 the twen- I, I guess what I'm thinking is the twenty-five is a good approximation. But when you dig into it, it may be slightly different.
Then one way to reframe it and sort of think about it too is to be. I guess I've struggled with. Thinking about this and. Not being embarrassed of the figure that it's higher. It shows that we're paying our teachers what they're worth, it shows that they renegotiated and we're, we're. We're paying for that, we are paying for insurance costs that have gone up twelve point seven percent, like. It's not necessarily something to be ashamed of, more of like, this, we're doing this, like, this is what we're doing as a community. For our teachers and our schools to keep it running, like, frame, framing it that way.
And I could be wrong, but I also think it's one of the downsides of unmerging.
Yeah.
Is that your cost go up?
Right.
If it's an emerged district, you have, and have lower costs because the costs are more evenly shared. So the townspeople voted to unmerge. And this might be. One of the.
I, I, I think that's, that may, that's a, a, a theory, but I. I'm, I'm not sure that when. You compare the cost, it had, in, of previous separate districts with. The newly merged districts, whether that actually resulted in savings, I, 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 I'm skeptical.
Well, if we were in a merged district, we would have all the elementary schools under one budget. And so ones with lower budgets would.
It's such a big higher.
No, only Rafton has higher than us.
But that was the only one we'll merge with.
If we were a fully merged.
You're so right.
Yeah. I still like it because then it's more autonomous, like I still support that.
Yeah, but just the finance finances of it are are a little bit murky, and Maine has gone, Maine was through a hole. The whole thing and and did not as a whole discover much in the way of savings. So it's it's a it's a debatable point.
So on the on the floor right now, there's not a motion, but this is a discussion to figure out. Um how to determine the tuition rate that Westminster would charge. Were a family to request to come here, and our policy that we've been working on as a draft does require um. The sending district to pay a tuition, so we're trying to determine what that tuition would be.
I think the number Charlie said makes sense. The number you said makes sense.
I I really should try increasing our enrollment one hundred and sixty just because who knows, and then it comes down to twenty twenty four thousand off the nose. And that seems like a reasonable number, if we're taking people in and.
In the maximum of twenty five is what Jim had said.
So twenty four is probably what it would be.
Jim, are you tinkering or thinking?
No, I just, as long as it's not higher than the twenty five, any number you want.
Three nine four nine point one six eight eight, how about that?
No, let's go with twenty four, you, let's entertain a motion to have that be established as the Westminster tuition. Uh for any students choosing who are we're asking to uh come here, go with that or just. And this would be the published tuition rate for the Westminster uh center school.
Did you get a second? I didn't hear, is there a second?
Have one, but I'd be happy to have you do that if you want a second.
I'm seconding it, yeah, that's good.
Hey, there's a motion on the floor that the tuition for the Westminster Town School District will be in the amount of twenty four thousand dollars. Okay. Need further discussion? Okay, uh Karen, your vote?
Aye.
Margie?
Aye.
Team?
Aye.
All right. So we're down to a director's comments, and as a procedural note, um. Superintendent Haas has updated our articles so that they're in the proper sequence, and I would. I will pass this around in a moment, ask everyone to sign it, and then I will insert. Karen's signature as well. With that, are you ready to direct this comment?
Uh I just want to thank Liz and Jim and Cheryl and Andy and anyone else who worked on this budget, this is a very large job, and I appreciate all the work they've done. Thank you.
Okay, Karen.
I second what what team just said, truly, yeah, I'm so impressed by the work that you've done.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, it was really good, and I liked the letter as well. That clarified a lot of the things, questions, so I think that's good. School seems like it's been going really well, Liz, thank you for all your hard work and um. I think that's it, thanks, Jim, yeah, budget.
And Charlie.
Same, thanks for everybody who worked on this, and thank you David for coming in, I think it's having the margins.
Thanks to, thanks to everyone, and I'd ask the directors to say that they need to sign this document, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to return. We are set for the next meeting that's in the appointment. Thursday, February sixteenth, at six o'clock in the building, right?